We're gonna go ahead, we're all ready for it. We're gonna go ahead and get started in our committee meetings this evening. We have six first readings, we have no second, third, or pending. I'm pretty sure it's a Jim Cott show.
That'd be me.
All right, Jim, take her away.
Resolution 21 R. We are opening our finance committee meeting at 6:03. Resolution 21 R. 67, a resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Martinoff Home Solutions LLC for purchase and installation of four new HDAC systems at the New Franklin Tudor House and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And Mr. Mayor, this is to address the swelling of the wooden floors that we agreed to take care of?
Yes, it is. It's, uh, that was one of the listed items. We knew it was an issue. We didn't know why. We knew it was above the boiler, and we knew the boiler's about a thousand years old. And as time went on and he got in and started doing more, we found out that it wasn't just there, that there's mold forming in the basement walls, and there's circulation issues, and there's issues relative to that, condensation that are causing that problem. If you've seen it when they swell, it can be significant, and it could impact the integrity of the flooring system over there. So with that in mind, this would be the last major, the last, I will say, major expense that we would expect the city to be involved with. There's a lot of work with electrical needs to be done. The management company's doing that. If that's in excess of $10,000, there's been a ton of plumbing work to be done because that plumbing is, well, it's almost 100 years old. And, you know, that's all with the management companies. So this is, there's one thing to follow, there's a serious bat problem. That's a serious bat problem. A serious bat guana problem. And so we're talking with them, trying to get some pricing, perhaps to see what we can do about the guana. This was kind of like a latent defect that nobody knew about. But the bat removal, we're talking with OBNR, but we may come down the road with that, that's not going to this kind of expense, but that's it.
Well, didn't that happen at Meason Manor also? Did they run into that?
It did. Yeah, it was horrible over there. And then the city paid some money 15 years ago at the Tudor House, somewhere in that range, to get it out of there and to get it sealed. But we've learned a lot about bats in the last 90 days now, that they can get in the tiniest of cracks. And then they're protected also. So we're working with OBNR, there's a chance OBNR will not help us get the bats out of there. Anyway, but yeah, that's what this is about.
So this bid is for $46,600. Did we get other bids, or?
Yes, we did. I've got, we got one from J&amp;J Plumbing, local company, they were at $49,750. We had another company come out, and they said that their proposal was going to be somewhere in the range of $90,000, and we told them we didn't need to, you know, reduce that to $10,000. So we're pretty comfortable with this price.
Okay. And on the bid shows that it expired three months ago. Are they still willing to accept that?
They are. I had them, they resented this, but yes, they'll still accept it.
All right. Questions, comments?
Would you get the money for this? Your money says five hundred?
We do. Between the Tudor House and the parks funds, we have sufficient funds to cover it.
Any reason to hold off? Assuming that we want to get this rectified pretty quickly.
Yes.
So we'll ask to waive the three on this. Moving on to Resolution 21 R. 68, a resolution ratifying a three-year labor agreement between the City of New Franklin and Logo 2885 of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, CLCIAFF Union, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is the second of our three contracts?
It is, and the wage scale is the same as the police, it's two and a half percent each year. There is included with the police, similar to police, those equity increases of $500 the first year and then 250, 250 the second and third year. And those are, we looked at these numbers, and they are, they do conform with what's going on around the state in terms of, a lot of them in fact are 3% and 4%. And I would say, another thing that the firefighters were, were willing, were very accommodating during negotiation, and one of the things we had to address was to make sure we had sufficient staffing for the New Melville Village stations. And so that involved commitments to, and some certain modifications, to time off, et cetera, to make sure that we have the manpower to do that, and they understood the importance of that, and they cooperated with us, so some of those modifications in there also. It was a, it was a cordial negotiation.
I read through the red line, I didn't see anything that, you know, went ooh. I'm sure you all did too. Any questions or comments? Again, we appreciate the fire department and the union working with us, as the police did, so, very nice. We'll ask to waive the three on this. Move forward.
Yeah, that is helpful, because once you approve it, then it'll go to them for final ratification. They ratified initially, and then we'll have the official contract.
Resolution 21 R. 69, a resolution ratifying a three-year labor agreement between the City of New Franklin and Logo 348 of the Teeters Union and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is number three of three for our service department.
And this one, it's a two and a half percent without the equity, because their wages are currently within parity of local, if you know, of other municipalities. And they understood that as well. There also was some accommodation by the union there in terms of limitations to the number of, because it's such a small department, to make sure we don't have too many guys off at the same time. And so the notice for the time off, and how many can be off at the same time, and so the contract was tweaked in that regard as well. And we would ask you to approve that one as well, so you can move to final contract.
Questions, comments? Any? We'll ask to waive the three on that. Resolution 21 R. 70, a resolution bringing wage increases for certain full-time and part-time non-union job classifications and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is for the part-time police and fire, police chief, police captain, fire chief, assistant fire chief, deputy service director, and superintendent, a two and a half percent increase.
And again, no equity increase, it's the, basically given the first and the second in each department, that two and a half percent. And we wanted to also extend that again to the part-time police and fire, because as you know, it's just getting harder and harder to find those folks.
Questions, comments? I will say that I am fully in favor of taking care of our part-timers, for reasons you said, and again, I don't think they should be penalized just because they're part-timers. And as I have in the past, I am not in favor of automatic raises to non-union people, I think we need to have an evaluation system, and each person evaluated on their individual job performance relative to their position.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Cottson, I've always respected that position. You know, we're getting closer, and, you know, the first piece of it really was to adopt the policy manual for the city, we got that done. This will be the first year that we'll complete the performance evaluations, which will give us a baseline. And then we anticipate, when we get to this time next year, that we'll have, we'll perform the second performance evaluation and have some criteria to, you know, to consider the issue relative to merit raises. We're gonna address the issue with our other non-union people, I'll bring that up as a separate piece of legislation. I had something drawn, but there's, there's some tiers in there that I think I needed to work on before I brought that to you. So I'll have that probably next meeting.
Okay, excellent. Anybody else? We'll ask to waive the three. Resolution 21 R. 71, a resolution authorizing an advance from the general fund to the 2063 JAG grant fund and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Again, this is from the general fund, advances out to the JAG fund, advances in for $12,857.14 and to give the mayor a great one as our finance director.
Yeah, this is just an advance for the funds that they've used for this grant, and then we will seek reimbursement from the grant, and then those funds will be returned to the general fund.
And which grant is this?
This is, I believe, the radius.
Radios, okay. And that looks, the price looks right for that. Questions, comments? We'll ask to waive the three. Resolution 21 R. 72, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately. Something we have to do every year, it needs to be done before the 1st of November, or right around the first part of November.
We have to get them a copy of it by the end of this month.
So we'll ask to waive the three. Anybody else have a question, comment, concern? We will close. Finance committee meeting at 6:42. Thank you all for attending.
Very nice, Jim. Alrighty, anybody have anything else for their committees? Let's discuss. Alrighty, then I'm gonna call to order the City of New Franklin Council Meeting, it's Wednesday, October 6, 2021, at 6:16. If you'd all stand up and play it, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation, under God, in the discipline of liberty and justice of the world.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Cox.
President.
Mr. Hargit.
President.
Mrs. Jones. Mr. Fetterman.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Stock.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of September 15, 2021.
Second.
I have a comment on the, whatever we're doing minutes. Should we have a notation in there as to why the meeting didn't start at 6 o'clock? We had the Purple Heart ceremony, so if somebody's looking back, it just, you know, why happened at 26:00 and 7:25?
No, that's a good thought, I would certainly confirm that, that because we scheduled the Purple Heart ceremony, that was a cause for the delay, or I would agree, maybe we'd say, due to a delayed occasion by the Purple Heart City Ceremony at the end of it, for the regularly scheduled meeting, due to, met at 7:25 PM for the regularly scheduled meeting, due to a delay as a result of the Purple Heart City Ceremony.
I'd like to make a motion as amended to the next setting.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Pass the six zero. We'll move into our public comments, please keep your comments addressed to council under four minutes, and state your name and your addresses, please.
I'm a retired teacher, so I have visual aids. Good teachers do that.
Oh, we're gonna catch a meat soul.
You know what, I think I can just put on the chair. My name is Sharon Rapp, I live behind the soccer fields that are behind the sister ball fields. So it's ball fields, the woods, the soccer fields, and then my property that joins that whole rear portion. And I- May I have your address? Sure, 781 Yeager. Thank you. Sure. I've been a Manchester resident for 30 years, and have lived in my home at 781 Yeager's, and I walk back to that area regularly. Last week, on Monday through Wednesday, there was a skid loader that tied into the underbrush in that wooded area. And so I started asking around as to what was going on, and ended up calling Mayor Adams, because that's what you do, right? You call the mayor. And we missed each other, but he was good enough to call me back and give me a good explanation of what was going on. It wasn't exactly what I was hoping to hear, but I'm sure that's not the first time that's happened before either. So I went back and started talking to neighbors on Purnell and Drake Drive, which is what runs back in that area, the two little deadened streets, and no one really knew about the proposed implementation or construction of the pickleball fields and the tennis courts. So at that point, I drafted a little letter of concern, just saying, we're a little bit worried, and this is why we're worried. So in coming to talk to you tonight, I wanted to make sure I kind of did my due diligence, and so I went back into where the woods is, and started measuring some trees. There are some simple kinds of formulas you can use to get a rough age on trees, and I also had some input from the Wilderness Center in Wilmont about how to do that, and I had done that before, it's parts of other classes I had taken anyway. Back in that woods, there are some really big, beautiful trees, and when I went back in the first time, what I was really trying to do was just determine how many different species of trees there actually were in there, and what some of their sizes were. So these were some of the species, I was not looking for the biggest trees, I was just looking for different kinds of trees. So at that point, I started checking their circumference. Once you do their circumference, you do that 54 inches around the tree, then you divide that by pi, you multiply that by a growth quotient for that particular tree, because trees grow at different rates depending on what the kind they are, a beech grows really slow, a goat grows a little bit faster. And so these were some of the things that I came up with when I was measuring those trees. There are some really huge red oaks there, and because I couldn't bring the trees to you, I brought some measurements long. So at, ooh, that was, it's like a twisty chopper, thank you so much. So, I mean, just like, going down? Yeah, that's fine, and I've got one more. So at 54 inches, two of those big oaks back there, this is their circumference, they're that big, they're enormous, enormous trees. And they provide so much, being a science person, you know, to our environment. Those trees, when I calculated ages, came out at 190 and 100, maybe two years' age. So that is dependent on water, weather, lots of other things, but those trees are all sharing resources together in that area, so it's not like a specimen tree out in your yard is gonna get really big because it's getting a lot of rain and a lot of sunshine. These trees are all kind of working for the same thing, so I would think that this is pretty accurate. I did a black oak that was 129 years old, a white oak came out at 181, a red maple at 136, a black walnut at 95, a black cherry at 94, and an American beech at 75. There are also some hickories up in there, but I wasn't able to isolate exactly where those trees were to get measurements off of them. This woodland is 4.8 acres, in the middle of this Sisler complex. It is a mature mixed hardwood forest, which is a wonderful thing, because a lot of times we get forests that are only one kind of tree, and this has lots of different things going on in them. It is the only forest in our city park system, because then I got in my car and drove around and went to our different parks. And I understand that many of us have land here in New Franklin, and we have yards, we have trees, we have whatever, but we don't have a forest that's part of a park. So I went around, looked at the different parks, I went to Lakeside, which has a pickleball court, and that's pretty much all that can fit on that property. I went to Maple Grove, and I have no idea where that is, I drove all over, it's not marked, and there's no place to park, there's, is-
Southside.
Is it the end of Spangway someplace?
Yeah, southside.
Okay, but there's no signage for that at all, so I don't really know what that looks like, except that on the website for the city, it said it was a grassland. Sisler has sports and the forest, Miracle has sports and the walking trail, Rollins just seems to be mostly a mowed lawn area over by the Tudor House, if that's correct. Lockhart, sports, Grill, sports, and I think also there's a little bit of open space over there. So my real concern with the location of these fields is that we are taking something that we're not ever going to get back again, not in our lifetimes, it's just not going to happen. And if there's an alternate spot that we can consider as part of that, right now with the undergrowth removed from that area, it's beautiful back there, to go up in there and walk, and if you were to put some kind of a walking trail, and some picking tables and some benches up in there, it's gorgeous. The other really great thing is that because we have so many different kinds of species up in there, an oak tree actually supports 534 different species of butterflies and moths, and they use the oak tree as part of their development. A cherry supports 401, but they're different from what the oak tree supports. So when you have a mixed hardwood forest, you have all this stuff going on up there that we don't see, but it brings in lots of birds, which brings in other kinds of wildlife, and it's just a beautiful area. And it seems to me like it would be a real shame for this to be gone forever, we can't knock this down and just replant it, and it's never going to happen. So I don't know if there are other options that we could look at. I realize I'm a little late in the game on this, I've gotten spotty delivery of my Suburbanite, which is where I usually keep track kind of of what's going on since COVID, that seems to us, some trouble, you know, getting that delivered in different weeks, I don't get it at all. But I did, when I walked around and talked to neighbors, every single person on Purnell and Drake signed a letter of concern. There's concern about water runoff, there's concern about placement, there's concern about the lighting that would be back there, there's concern about those being quiet dead in streets and being more activity than we already have, because we already got soccer and baseball back there. Every single person on Purnell and Drake signed, except I did not go to the lady that has a beware of dogs sign, so I didn't go see her. And then another neighbor was good enough to feel strongly about it, and kind of went out on his own and started getting signatures, and we just started this Saturday evening, and he stopped by today and had 51 signatures too, of people that were also very concerned. So it just doesn't seem like an environmentally good thing to do, that you could take that area and do something with it that would just be really, just a beautiful place for people. Those poor folks are sitting out there in the hot sun in those ball fields all day long. If I was them, I would be thrilled to go sit and pick a table in the woods and have sandwich. So I am going to give you some talking points, because I just kind of ran off what I just talked about here. Also, as part of these talking points, there's a little bit at the back that are actually some studies about wooded areas. Cleveland is actually working on trying to reestablish hardwoods, hardwood forests into their areas. At the very back of that package, and that's the last page, it's called the Cleveland Tree Coalition, and it talks about the role that trees have in cities, how much rainwater they absorb, how much air pollution they absorb, it reduces the stress from high heat days, especially these big trees like this, and we've had lots of high heat days. And then the very last page is a study that was done in 2020 on sixth graders, and setting them up for success as they transition into middle schools, and one of the things this study found was that if the school ended up having better standardized test scores in math and reading, the more tree cover they had around the school. And the study included 450 middle schools and nearly 50,000 students in urban, suburban, and rural communities in Washington State. So trees have lots and lots of benefits, we just need to make sure that we keep those trees so that we can kind of partake in those for many more years. Thank you so much for your time, very appreciative.
Excellent presentation.
My turn. Last segment. I lost to Adeline Park in 55 Drake Drive, New Franklin. At the end of my street is a culvert that goes under Drake Drive, across the street into, across Manchester Road, and for many, many years, it always flooded because the culvert always got full with dirt and other things, because the stream that most in my backyard comes off of way past the middle school and down around Sisler. When they built Sisler, the ball fields, my, the erosion got so bad in my backyard from all the dirt and everything else flowing off of the creek, I was very annoyed, I don't think you were mayor at the time, and Al still won't talk to me about certain things, because it was, it flooded my side yard consistently. Now they rebuilt that culvert this year, and I'm afraid if you take all those trees down and you do that development, once again, we're gonna have bad erosion problems, that culvert's gonna get filled with the dirt and anything else, and you guys are gonna be back in my yard constantly trying to clean up. They used to come out two or three times a year to dredge the creek, because it got so bad, and hollows me from raising this issue. The other thing is, is we have for years complained about people at the soccer fields parking on our streets, on Drake and Purnell. When soccer teams are going, we get people, and we tell them, there's signs that you can't park there because we've had it actually happen when the ambulance has to get through, and there's people parking there and they take their ambulance through to the soccer field and something happens. So if you're gonna build pickleball fields and stuff like that, I want the old trees to stay up, I want the wooded areas to stay up, I want better parking, I want better erosion control, I want better design to make sure that our neighborhood's not being negatively affected by the creek and by the other issues with, you know, who's using what space. So I've actually asked for speed bumps to put on Drake Drive, because we would get cars going up and down, we've got kids off, you know, soccer, and they'd be coming down the road pretty quickly, and stuff like that. So I just asked if you, I don't want, I don't like, I don't like the pickleball schools there, I want some wooded areas, but if you can do it, please be aware that you've got to, I don't want to call myself a dish. But I can, that culvert was so annoying, I'm talking about, now, I'm still going after the construction, because their water treatment system, the pipe that goes down my front yard, or the water treatment system, we broke it, and the school's refusing to repair it. And at some point in time, when it floods my front yard, you know, I'm gonna be back, and I'm gonna say, I'm sorry, if you all, if somebody doesn't do it, I'm gonna have to fix it, and I'm gonna send somebody else to build, and I don't care about what is best, I care about best, you know, so I'm gonna be doing it. I need to make that threat myself, if you guys use to do it, I've done it, and regular basis. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I pop in and add one more thing I forgot to say? I am not at all opposed to the pickleball and tennis courts, that is not my intent in being here at all tonight. And I am not a wave maker, so even for me to be here, it's my little poster board, it's a big deal. But what I would like to see is that just, that opportunity be placed somewhere where it's not going to impact our area more than we're already impacted, and where we can say something that's just gonna be beautiful for future generations. So, you know, I have no issues with pickleball and tennis courts, I understand the people that want that, and I understand the need. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, you go.
No, here you go.
You go.
I'm Joe Hercules, my address is 5060 Karen Drive, I'm the president of the Manchester School Board, I also have an agreement, Park Ranger Services, and I manage my own 19 acres of woodland. I find a couple faults with this argument that she made, but first we'll address the placement of tennis courts on that property. We started about three years ago looking for a place for tennis courts and then for a way to pay for them. We, with our bond issue that we passed for athletic fields and new buildings, we do not have funding for tennis courts, so the mayor came to us with a proposition, that property that you listed as Sisler Park, 4.8 acres, it's actually 3.25 acres, it's actually school district land that we donated to the city for the, for the construction of tennis courts. In the contract we wrote with the city, if tennis courts are not built there, it refers back to the district, correct, Paul? In which case, we would probably build tennis courts there. So even if the city doesn't, if the city looks for other placement, the property would come back to the district and we would probably still put tennis courts there. As far as your backs on the trees, I can tell you I had about, I wanna say about $6,000 worth of timber sold off my property three years ago. I had an oak tree that was four foot across, that would be about 12 feet in diameter, it was 46 years old. So there's a lot that goes into this, you also mentioned how many species of butterfly and cherry trees, I walked that property today, there's not a cherry tree back there.
There's Sisler?
Yeah, there's no cherry tree.
Yeah, there's cherry trees.
I didn't see, I saw a lot of oaks.
There were a lot of black cherries.
There are wild cherries, yeah.
There are also wild cherries. My husband, I pick every year.
Oh, yeah, there's cherries there.
Okay. Joe, we're going to address council, too.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. So anyhow, I just wanted to state that, you know, the selection of that piece of property was ideal for both the district and the city. It kills two birds with one stone, if that's not too anti-environmental, but it's probably going to end up being developed at any rate at some point. The other point I would make is that we have over four hundred acres of natural beauty in the Porterslake State Park. It's really underutilized by our city, and there's plenty of trees there. I know it's, it's not as old growth, it was farmed pretty recently as well. And the last point I would make is you could go, there's a site you can look at, historical aerial photos, that property was maybe young saplings in about nineteen fifty-six, so probably as early as the late nineteen forties that was farmed. I doubt any of the trees on there are over a hundred and ten years old at the most. That's all I had to say.
All right, thanks.
Kevin Ball, fifteen sixty-seven Swider. I got a few things here. One, the first one I had was, sorry, I swapped the AC units on the Tudor House. I know we have a contract with the management company out there, and I, I think you kind of addressed it, but we don't see any other major expenses coming for the Tudor House. I know they, looks like they rented some of the parking lot out there.
It was the demo lot.
The AC at, it's the, hold there, have you got that fixed?
Yes.
The contract and registration, you had mentioned Hudson's doing that, or looking at doing that?
I thought I read that or seen that, or...
No, they're, they're not. And in talking with the gentleman that runs CD and the city engineer, they have the county do that, they have absolutely no need to do that. The only thing they do differently than we do here is we actually have right-of-way permits for people working in the right-of-way to protect the streets, and they actually have a form of a registration for contractors working in the streets, and that is so they pay their permit to get engineering inspectors out, and then they make sure to use the proper L S M or backfill, make sure the roads aren't paved. Last thing I have here is while I'm talking with residents, the resident lives at fifty-nine ninety-nine Fawn, he had some complaints about the road that's repaved out there. He lives right in the cul-de-sac, and apparently before they repaved it, he had a real nice transition from his driveway to the street, there wasn't a big bump in Jar's car and everything, there was no water that, that actually sat there. Since the repaving, there's a lot of water that sits there right in the curb of the cul-de-sac. He's got a bump that actually jars his vehicles when he's pulling in and out. He's called the service department a handful of times. One of the responses he had was, we haven't sent him the final check, we'll get it fixed. He's called numerous times since, he hasn't gotten return calls. He did get a return the one time, and they set up a flunk at the game out there, they never showed up. He's talking, and I actually went out, I was looking at it with him, but it looks like there's some mud or something getting pushed up, I don't know, there's a saw slot there, but anyways, if somebody could just get out there and then take a look at that, I got a phone number I can pass on to somebody, but he's getting kind of frustrated because nobody's really getting back to him.
He has never called one of us on council, he's getting new calls?
Well, I was out, not numbers. So, all right.
Yeah, we, I haven't heard from, I didn't reach from our desk, so, but if you'll share the name, address, and phone number with, or we'll make sure we follow up.
Great, thanks.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you. All right, again, we got six first readings, we'll go ahead and get started with our first readings, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash sixty-seven, Kelly.
A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Martinoff Home Solutions LLC for purchase and installation of four new HVAC systems at the New Franklin Tudor House, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R six seven.
First second roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Move to resolution twenty-one dash R dash sixty-eight, Kelly.
A resolution ratifying a three-year labor agreement between the City of New Franklin and Local two eight eight five of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL dash CIO, CLC, IAFF Union, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty-one R six eight.
First second roll call, please.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R six eight.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Move to resolution twenty-one R dash sixty-nine.
A resolution ratifying a three-year labor agreement between the City of New Franklin and Local three forty-eight of the Teamsters Union, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R six nine.
First second roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Move to resolution twenty-one dash R dash seventy, Kelly.
A resolution granting wage increases for certain full-time and part-time non-union job classifications, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R seventy.
First second roll call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R seventy.
First and second discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. We'll move to resolution twenty-one dash R dash seventy-two.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty-one R seventy-two.
First and second roll call, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That passes six to zero. Again, no second, third, or pending. Third part of the meeting, here it comes. Here's your vote. All right, thank you. It was an excellent presentation, Ms. Franklin. I know we're sensitive to those concerns. They're coming late, and I, that's nobody's fault. Well, I wouldn't say that. If we didn't get the message out, I would note that, gosh, we started talking about this about a year ago, and we, because two things were happening, what we heard from the schools, they, they needed, they wanted tennis courts, and then the pickleball people started coming to us, and, and we were interested in trying to accommodate them, so that's when the conversation started about a year ago. And I really just say this in terms of how we try to get the word out, that I, I know not a lot of people tune into our website, I hope more of them do, that, you know, we invited, we posted the notion that we wanted to put a group together, a nets committee, and we did that, and we formed that committee in early, January, February of twenty twenty-one, and started having conversations with them. Actually, the parks commission, we went to them in October of twenty, and they were, they fully endorsed the notion of doing tennis courts and pickleball courts, something for, you know, a lot of stuff we do, just do our athletic fields, and, and we talked about the potential site, because the school had a situation. On the original Sisler plans, the tennis courts are there. This is from about two thousand and seven. Actually, it's, it, the plans were drawn for the village of New Franklin, so it was probably two thousand and four, two thousand and five, and it didn't come to fruit. And I have coached a million years of baseball over there, I know there were a lot of woods there that were cleared to make room for those parks, so then, and the tennis courts were supposed to go, but there just wasn't enough money to do them, and they would have been in, you know, essentially the same location. So knowing that and looking at different thoughts, and then the idea with the school was that, that the partnership, they, they could donate the land, and, and the city would be responsible for building the courts strictly with park funds. We have five percent of our income tax goes to parks, and can only be spent for capital improvements, and if there's a balance left, it could be used to support those capital improvements, but it has to be parks money. So the, the plan was and is that it would be only parks money that would be used for these courts. We wouldn't take money that could be used for paving or anything else and build these courts. Money that has to be spent on the parks, and historically, that money's been spent for ball fields. And, and I won't say that pickleball players are older guys, but a lot of, the older guys play pickleball, and it's sort of like, what about us? And then the tennis courts, gosh, we, we had a tennis program out here with thirty kids on the varsity, if I'm not mistaken, between, you know, just on the high school and, and no tennis courts, and they're traveling all over the place to try to play tennis, and Coventry has no courts, and we want to make available to Coventry as well. I don't think Northwest has a team, Norton has courts. So the idea, you know, the idea, okay, we'll, we'll use parks money, we'll apply for grants, which we've done, we're waiting to hear on those grants, to, you know, cover as much of the costs as we can, and then we build these courts, we'll make sure that the high school tennis teams and the grade school program at Nolly, I understand they are involved in tennis as well, so we make it available for them, give them preference, make sure they can hold their matches there, and then, you know, then the courts will be open to the public after that, and the same with the pickleball courts, it's a raging success. We've talked about that before. So then where do we put it? Well, this is where initially it was going to go, and the school says, well, you know, if you build it, we'll get, we'll donate that land, and so that was all taking place early in the year, in, in April, and we talked a lot about it in, in our council meetings, and I know not everybody watches, and I get that, it's, you know, it's hard to notify everybody of everything, but in April, we approved going out for, applying for the grants. Council did that, and then in May, we came out with the, to put it up for, put it out for bid, and I think that went to two readings, and so it was discussed a number of times on occasion.
Has anyone gone out and walked that?
Oh, I've been there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, I think you're, well, I'll tell you, I mean, your description is accurate, but I mean, it, it, I'm no arborist, but I, but I don't like to take trees down, okay? But it didn't strike me, I'll be honest with you. For instance, we acquired four acres of forest or woodland from ODNR directly adjacent to our Tudor House, so we do have one park, our Tudor House, that has four acres, actually almost five acres, of wooded area right adjacent to it, and we're going to put, we're going to do it, you know, we're going to put trails and those kind of things in there eventually, so, you know, we do have other, other woods, but when I walked in now, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying, it didn't look to me, now it was spring, and there were no leaves, but it just didn't look like inviting kind of woods to me, I'll be honest with you.
It's, it's very nice now.
I can see that, because I was over there yesterday.
Yeah, it's really, it's really nice.
I don't disagree with you, but in the context of it, so when we reached that point, it just seemed like the place, I will tell you that two things happened, and we used our engineer, and there was serious consideration given to the stormwater planning, because we don't want to repeat that, okay? And so that's, that was factored into the plans. Additional parking is factored into the plans, and I can't remember how many spots, fifty, sixty, seventy, eight extra spots, and nobody likes to cut a tree down, but if I, when I look at it in the abstract, when you travel around to different sports complexes around the city, the county, the state, you know, you're going to see, I mean, that place, as you said accurately, you know, in the, on the, on the east side of it is the, is the seventh eighth grade football field, back in that corner is Crown Field, the baseball. As you know, you've got two soccer fields right behind it, then you've got the package plant, and then we got soccer fields, and then we got Sisler. I mean, it, it seems from the standpoint of an athletic complex to make sense, and, and so that's, that's what we, you know, we thought about some outward places, you know, could we try to do it out of grill, and then, well, that's a long way from where the schools are, and, you know, so that's where we landed, and I, you know, we'll, and, you know, it's, the, the property has been transferred, so, I mean, I certainly will talk further with you and, and try to give it some further thought, but then we'll get some more input from our nets committee and our parks committee, and see what their thoughts are, and I'll just report back to everybody. All right, trash aggregation is going to the, it'll be the third reading in, in green next Tuesday, and that's where we're asking them to be able to think back on their contract, and everything seems supportive up there, so we're hopeful that they'll approve that[1638.37] next Tuesday. And, uh, once they do, assuming they do, then we'll, we'll deal with Republic to tweak the contract, and, uh, and, uh, we're gonna end up with, I think, a really good rate, and we're not gonna have to switch vendors, so I think that'll be to everybody's benefit here in the city. The water levels, uh, are going down at the lakes on October 11th. Uh, let me see, that's a week from Monday. Uh, it takes seven days to get them all the way down, so people will work on their docks, and then they'll start replenishing on November 15th, and that's a seven-day process to get the water back in. So that's what's going on there. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's coming Monday, honey.
Yes?
It's not a week from Monday, that's...
Oh, no, it's just coming Monday, right, right, week, year, week, yes. Uh, all right. I had the privilege of going to talk to the seventh, second grade classes at Nolly, week before last and then, and then this week. Mrs. Slimek invited us, and, uh, Mrs. Rankin, Mrs. Grandin, Mrs. Van Dorstman, it is a pleasure to go into that school. And I, I tell you this, uh, because I'm gonna tell you about, well, let me, let me tell you that trick-or-treat is going to be, well, the Manchester schools, a lot of community, a lot of neighborhoods have their own, and the, the city doesn't dictate any of this when trick-or-treat is, but the city always wants to know when you're doing it, so we make sure that we got proper police. So we don't set a trick-or-treat date, but with the Manchester PTA or whoever, they, you know, they, they pick a date, and then a lot of times that becomes the universal date, I don't know. Well, the date that they picked this year is Friday, October 29th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Uh, and, uh, and I understand they think there's, that there's a chance that there'll be a home football game on that Saturday, and that's why they decided to stay away from Saturday, so, that's secondhand, I don't know if that's true, but that's the dates, all right? Uh, and so I mentioned that, I was gonna report that, and then, you know, one of the, you know, nobody really wanted to know how government runs, they just wanted to know when trick-or-treat was. No, actually, they did a great job, a great presentation, uh, and the teachers had done a, a nice, and I, I don't wanna waste, spend a lot of time on it, but then they sent me the nicest stuff, this is the most fun part of this thing. They sent me, and as a teacher, you get it, they sent me these really neat cards. Uh, this guy here, he had a fold-up card. That's pretty nice. Uh, this, uh, that's from Calvin, Calvin didn't begin me his last name. But I just, you know, you just gotta forgive me, I'm gonna share, uh, uh, to him real quick. Uh, I had a suggestion to make Manchester even better, a bike park and sidewalks and a public swimming pool and ski park. Thank you for all you do. And we get that every time I go talk to the kids, that's what we, you know, they want more parks, they want more places to play. Uh, two more. Dear Mary Emerson, you're the best mayor ever. Oh. I have a few suggestions, can you tell the police officers to tell people to stop littering? And if anybody finds out, they get a ticket. Uh, and you, can you make one or two restaurants and one or two stores? So they like that stuff, a couple of them wanted toys for us. Uh, and, uh, and finally, uh, another one that says, you are the most best mayor in the world. It's true, he's the best. Uh, so now it's official. I'm so glad that you came to our school, uh, and, uh, this might be a little tingly because this is from my granddaughter.
I was gonna say, much when you're a grandf...
All right, so we had a lot of fun with that. Sunday, and I'll tell you the other thing, Sunday is the Oktoberfest, noon and 6:00 PM. We're gonna have hayride's out there. Uh, we, I think we've got some, uh, some dancers coming, we got a polka band, food trucks, beverage trucks, um, uh, it's a bounce house, and I will tell you, as soon as I told the second graders about the bounce house, and, you know, did they have any questions about government? How do you get to the Tudor House? Uh, so please come join us on Sunday. Uh, that's, that's just been a good time, and of course, we can get to do it next year. Uh, on the serious business side, I am going to ask, uh, council for a motion to approve the appointment of Daniel Darrow, D-A-R-R-O-W, as an alternate to the BZA for the balance of 2020.
One.
One. Thank you. For the balance of 2021.
What's his first name?
Daniel.
And Daniel Darrow?
Yes.
And he had a motion to accept the mayor's, uh, appointment of Darrow. Daniel Darrow.
Second.
Second. All fair? All right. Close?
That's all I have, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, Susan?
Um, well, actually, we are, you know, starting to get into our, our busy season, so we're all busy working, but we wanted to bring you like other pieces of good news. And once again, Otter Awards for our audit for 2020, so we're really happy to start one, and...
I, I should...
So, and, and I don't take the credit all to myself, obviously, because I, we got a good team in there, and we work hard, and everybody tries their best to do a good job for everybody, um, that lives in the city, so we're thankful.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
All right, we're on to old business. All right, new business?
I have something, David, I'm not sure, I think we can help, but I'm not positive. And I think it may be something that may help at, um, where people are driving to places the wrong streets. I have a gentleman that called me from Cherry Alley, and do you remember who he changed later?
Yeah.
Okay, it's still listed in Google Maps as Cherry, and they're turning up his drive, he's put a big sign up that says, this is not the park, and tells them how to get there. But we need to call Google Maps and have them change that, because their GPS is actually taking them there.
All right.
But he asked if there's something we can do for signs, I didn't call, um, and ask Brian, but I will, I'll give them a call and ask them, if there's some sign they can put up. And they might even be able to do that on your streets, because they do park up there when they're going places, and you can call, I know that.